Hello everybody, today we on this episode of Policy Talk, we have Mr. Balu with us, who is a Member Capacity Commission. He has worked in the nonprofit area, in the private sector, as a consultant, as an advisor in the HR team. He is also now very deeply engaged as a Member Capacity Commission. He is here with us to tell us about this new body, its role, its functioning, and how does he see the Prime Minister's vision of Kam Yogis or civil servants being turned into Kam Yogi succeeding in the near future? So, welcome, Mr. Balu.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me.
My first question obviously to you, Dr. Balu, is that what is the objective of the Capacity Commission? And what is your role in this commission?
It's a recently set up body and it just set up in April of this year. And some of you might know that Prime Minister keeps talking about his vision for a new India. And then this new India includes several things, amongst the several things that he talks about is, one is the five trillion dollar economy, one is Akhmanir Bharate, then he talks about how citizens should have ease of living, which includes the ease of doing business, then he talks about how technology should enable governance. His often repeated quote is minimum government, maximum governance. And his all focus has always been on citizens, you know, citizen centric approaches. But all this requires a tremendous shift in attitudes, in mindsets, in skillsets. Because you can, you can have a vision, right, but translating it to reality needs, the system needs to also evolve, build capacities, understand that new vision and then deliver on it. So I think, and the Prime Minister also keep talking of building a team India to deliver on this new India. And the federal government, the government of India itself has close to twenty million employees in different ways, in different numbers. Four million are the immediate employees that we are actually focusing on. And then you add railways, public sector, the paramilitary forces, the numbers keep going. So, his way of looking at it was how do we build capacities in these four million people to begin with? And see whether they can all be part of this team India to deliver on this new vision. Now, the whole world we must appreciate is going through enormous change. Covid has taught us a lot. And in this new narrative of a Covid world or a post-Covid world, whatever we call it, I don't think it's ever going to be a post-Covid. It's only going to be a Covid era. We need to really redefine how we can approach this entire space of public administration. And specifically in India, if you look at it, beyond the seventieth year of our independence, the last eight to ten years has been major shift. The last seven years has been very different in terms of engaging citizens, in trying to get everybody on board. And I think the key element, as I see it, is government has now moved, you know, just after independence, there's no choice but to take care of millions of people who are left out of the system. And so it was a very providing government, because it's a very patronizing, welfare oriented government. As we grew and in the nineties, we, the post-economic liberalization scenario, the government started understanding that you can't, you don't have to keep providing now. And they started to say, moving from providing more to provisioning more. And today, if you look at it, the government is no longer talking about provisioning, because there also there's a hierarchy between the state and the citizens. But today, the government and the Prime Minister keep saying Jan Bagidari, he's talking of partnering.
Where does Capacity Commission fit in? Because one of the objectives that I was reading on their website is, it says that it will coordinate with and supervise all government offices, training institutes to monitor and evaluate the implementation of plans and create shared resources. Now, they, what picked my interest was that it will monitor and evaluate the implementation of plans. Besides creating.
I think the plan that we meant is a capacity building plan. See, this is a, when, when a state moves its minds, when the paradigm shift is from providing to provisioning to partnering, it's a completely different mindset. And Prime Minister keeps talking about building people from being a Karma Chari to Karma Yogi. Yeah, so your understanding of civil servant has changed now. So we are no, he says about moving people from a rule based approach to a role based approach. So civil servants cannot talk of rules, they'll talk of roles they play. And that doesn't come easy for you, being talking rules for seventy-five years and suddenly you're asking them to talk about roles. That is where the Capacity Building Commission comes in. So what we do is we work with every ministry and we build a capacity building plan. That's a plan that we're referring to. Capacity building plan is built around, we look at what the ministry's goals are. And I'll ask ourselves, is it aligned towards the national aspiration that I just spelled out now?
Yes.
And what are the capacity gaps in the system, in the existing number of people who are working in that ministry to deliver on this vision? And then those gaps are mapped and then we roll out a capacity building plan for this ministry. And say within the next six months, one year, two years, these are the capacities at different levels of your people that you need acquire to deliver on your goals. And we evaluate and monitor it. And we also have functional supervision over all the training institutions, close to eight hundred of them in the government of India alone. And make sure that the quality of training and capacity that are built is relevant to the capacity building plan that we are rolling out. And we evaluate it, monitor it and make sure it results in actual change and not just another training program. So I don't really like to use the word training, training is only for circus animals. But I believe that we build capacities and we must remember, our country is the first country, which is actually set up a formal commission to actually keep looking at it on an ongoing basis. We are a permanent commission set up by the government to keep looking at capacities of civil servants. Because context keep changing, needs keep changing, citizens priorities keep changing. So the people have to be, the government has to be responsive to people. And as a measure of good governance, you need a body which will ensure that this happens. And that's what Capacity Building Commission is all about.
So how easy or how difficult it is to convince a meritocracy, which is, you know, recruited based on a passing an exam, that they need to upgrade their skills, one. Second, convince them that they lack certain skill. And third, that they need, for certain areas, you actually need not just knowing thing, but execution, you know. So, how easy or difficult it is to convince the meritocracy about this?
So I think it's not just the Indian bureaucracy or the Indian system. I have, I have worked in very large scale and advise a large scale change management programs. I've been advisor to other countries where I have done this and been there and done that. It's not easy for anybody, any system, even as individuals, why talk of government or the Indian government? You and I, tomorrow morning, we want to say wear a mask because Covid requires you to wear a mask. Why don't we agree to it? Right, we all understand the rationale, we all know it's important, but we all look for opportunities to remove the mask. We keep saying, don't touch your face, I'm a physician. So I keep saying, don't touch your face with your hands or don't touch your mask with your hands. But how can you really enforce it? So change is not easy, that's the point I'm trying to make. So any change is as difficult as the change you bring about. And my way of looking at change itself is, change is not about what you're changing. Change is about understanding what to preserve. So if we can understand what is the good in the system and we can look at preserving it, you at least reduce the impact of the discomfort that people might have. So I personally believe, my experience is only, I would say it's only six months old. So if I can base it on the six months of my experience being an insider now, I've been a rank outsider, I've been an activist, I've been outside the government, very easily criticizing the government for everything that went wrong. But being on the inside, I realized there are very intelligent people in the system. It's not what we outsiders imagine it to be and what at least I had imagined it to be. And when you interact with these people, they're fairly intelligent and they're all, all that, everybody's busy all the time. Now, are they doing smart work is a different object, a different way of analyzing it. But everybody is working very hard and I believe that most of them want to make a difference. I would say the substantial majority of them want change, want good things to happen, want to participate in nation building. So it's not, we can't generalize and say they're not interested. But they don't have the knowledge, the skillsets and all the abilities to go deep into change management and bring it in as a systemic process. And that is where people like me, my expertise come in. And I find most of them are very willing to explore and accept. So we are also not jumping in and making right, that's why like you said in the beginning, we may not be very well known. Because we are not here to be known, we are here to bring about change.
Yes.
And sometimes not being known is what helps you bring about change also.
Is it, okay. So now, as you pointed out, you know, that your experience before entering into this role was different than what it is now. There is also a general perception between, and I will call them government system versus private system. I don't like to use the word bureaucracy so much because it kind of gives a, you know, old world, German style way of working where rules are followed and not followed. But it's a system at the end of the day, which has an objective and has to do certain things. And, and it is deep, for the political leader, the execution is possibly well laid out. His success or his, this thing is dependent on whether he's able to succeed in executing the thing that he's promised his constituencies or his voter base. But there is a difference between how the government system works and how the private system works. Particularly on project execution, management, and time bound or time bound execution of projects to the, you may say, success of the, to the satisfaction of the stakeholder. In case of private sector, it is the customer, but in case of the government system, it is the citizen. Having worked in both sides of the area, what is your initial perception about the difference in these two systems?
See, I think, let's look at the three systems, the civil society groups where our, our bottom line is our mission, right? We always look at social change and say that's our mission. And we actually work under, in India, we work under tremendous resource limited setting. So we are learned to make ourselves efficient, there's no choice. If you're not efficient, yeah, right, there is a kind of limited resources. The public sector is a monopoly with very little measurements of success or failure in a real sense determining your existence. Private sector, your bottom line is money, you don't make money in the marketplace, you're, you're bankrupt, you're closed down, that's all. So the market determine your existence or your stakeholder determines your existence. In, in the mission oriented sector, my donors wouldn't fund me, they don't see an impact on the ground. If I don't run my school properly or my hospital properly, they're not going to give me a cheque. Whereas government, it's not like that, I get my salary whether I perform or not. So I think the way, the government, the standards of accountability set are very high. But I think there's certain structural limitations in the system, the public system. The first structural limitation, I believe, is the lack of interest or lack of intent or lack of participation of citizens itself in demanding accountability. I think the public sector accountability comes not by the fact that I am getting a salary, so I should respond to the system. But by the fact that my stakeholder, the citizen, keeps putting pressure on me. In fact, in my book, I the Citizen, I, I talk a lot about this and talk about how citizen engagement is possibly the answer to demanding accountability in its own way, which we don't. The second, this structurally, the constitution is so protective of a civil servant. Maybe when the founding fathers decided it or when Vallabhat Patel argued for it, he felt that they should be immune or insulated from the political pressures. And that's why he said they should not be, they should be so independent. But today, if a man is not performing, throwing him out of the system is what's virtually a decadal exercise. With all, everything clearly documented about his inefficiencies. So, and then the courts, see, that's again naturally because the state, when you look at the natural justice to be prevailing, everybody has got a chance to be heard and to be listened to and what you call is, grievance to be addressed, whether it's real or false, it has to be heard. And so I think the systems delays entire, so it sort of promotes inefficiency. And then let's look at the incentive structure. As much as there's no penalization if I don't perform, there's actually no visible incentive if I, and I perform. And I have seen excellent officers who do so well, very quiet, but are hardly recognized. Where do we celebrate performance? Where do we celebrate the good ones? We are very harsh on the not so good ones.
Actually, the system, the system precludes from public declaration of performances. Or, you know, a couple of years back, I had actually set up, when I was running a newspaper group, I'd set up a system for evaluating DCs at district level. And I was told by the department at the time that it is unfair for you to award district level officials. Because it is looked down upon within the civil service society to, you know, appreciate anybody publicly for just doing their job. And I said, no, it is important for them to be recognized and awarded because it is an incentive for them therefore to do better. So I, I completely understand this part of the issue which you're pointing.
In the private sector, now you have a notice board, it's the employee of the month. You go to small Starbucks, you'll have, there are only six employees, you'll have one person's photograph saying the best employee. In government, do the best DM's photograph, do we put the best joint secretary's photograph? We don't even celebrate goodness. So I think the system also needs to wake up and say, the public sector is doing public service. We demand public service of them, we make them accountable, but at the same time celebrate the good public service. I think it's a mixture, society is equally responsible as much as the system is responsible to deliver accountability. That's the way I look at it.
I'll take you to another issue on this whole capacity. One of the issues which was supposed to substantiate or build capacity was the literal entry of expert into the system. Now, we've seen some literal entries over the last couple of years. But literal entry is both ways. It is new expert moving into the government system and government civil servants moving out into the private sector to learn skills like project execution, project management or some technical skill, engineering skills, which they may not have. While we're seeing the movement, a little bit on the movement on the lateral entry into the government sector, we've not seen any movement out. So there is, there seems to be something lacking here. And what is it, what is the challenge here, Dr. Balu?
See, I'm just trying to understand the system and we just had one experiment of nine people getting in. I think one person quit joining and eight are there and reasonably, very early days to measure, nobody's measured it. See, all of us have an opinion.
Yes.
But we don't have empirical evidence to say it's working or not. I met some of those people, joint secretaries who came in latterly, some of them are extremely brilliant and they could have done so well in the private sector and that here itself shows it's good, good news, the way I see it. And any system, when it's disrupted with a new entrant, is not going to accept it welcomingly, right? It's going to take some time for them to warm up to the idea. The government is now going to get the next batch of lateral entrants and it's at three levels, not just joint secretary, a director and deputy secretary level, expanding the experiment. And I'm sure if the reasonable amount of inputs and we should also understand, we also need to question ourselves. You know, whatever's said and done in a regular system, accountability frameworks are stronger. The man is going to retire in government, you can hold him accountable. But somebody here for five years and then goes away. And, and that means the standards of accountability have to be really thought through. Well, I think all of us have to try it out. Different countries have done different experiments. The UK has done an experiment where a lot of private, the people are part-time. Of course, thirty, thirty-three percent of the employees of the UK civil services are part-time. They come two, three days a week, that brings an enormous value, right? You're also working somewhere else, you bring that knowledge here, you also take state knowledge there. That had one experiment, Singapore has done some excellent experiments, like what we exactly explain now, they call it secondment. They go into the private sector, spend six months to one year and come back to bring valuable private sector experience. Why not an employee from Civil Aviation Ministry go work in a large airline like Indigo or Vistara? Learn the challenges they're facing, the problems they have and come back. But if you look at our mindset, we always look at those people who bother and come back with suspicion. And India has done this, it's not as, India has not done this. In the past, we've had people seconded to private sector, to NGOs, etc. They've gone out and come back. But we always looked at it as, you know, people get seconded to World Bank, IMF and other places. But it's always, you know, what happens is, let's say, I've seen two, three kind of challenges. One, we look at them with suspicion and say, these guys are going to have conflict of interest, they're going to sell them, sell the government away. It may not happen, maybe just hidden fears. The second bigger problem is personal. I find the senior officers sometimes the mentality that, you know what, my salary is two lakhs, this man goes to private sector, he gets five lakhs a month, it's unfair. And so how can my junior, my junior go out and get more better pay? So I think all these challenges are there. But at the commission, we want to really look at it very empirically and see what are the advantages? How does the state benefit? Are there real value in there? Can we, are mitigating circumstances where we can actually define boundary lines where this conflict can be minimized? Can we have incentives? Some of them have done some extremely good work outside and come back. Some of them quit the service and go back and do brilliant work outside. So we need to really, it's a balance and we have to celebrate public service. See, in our country, we, we celebrate government jobs, but we don't celebrate public service, that's the difference.
Yeah, there's that question there. Everybody earns to be in a government job, but we actually don't appreciate government servant as much as they should. But coming back to the point of, you know, movement back and forth, say between, it's particularly important, say, in the case of regulatory body, you know, which are managing or which are controlling a particular sector, like you mentioned aviation, you know, it is important for the airport authority of India official to actually go and work in an airline. But then we look at it, when he comes, we look at it with suspicion. And we, and the system does not allow to move him out because they feel there is a, I mean, the system sees it as a anomaly, it sees it something wrong. And there is this whole perception that if he goes and earns something, that itself is wrong. When, when it is a hypocrisy of sort that, you know, people will not work in their best interest or people, we assume that the people will work, will only have good intention and good intention will therefore result into good outcomes, you know. While market determines that, you know, your good intention do not result in good outcomes. There has to be a system which has to support those outcomes. Coming to this aspect of, you know, how do you think that the Capacity Commission has been accepted or has been seen as an enabler by the government system itself? Because all of you, including the chairman, come from the private sector, you come from the civil society, you're, the third member is also not a.
He's a public sector official, he's a former IRS officer.
Yeah, yeah. So, so two out of three are from outside the sector and one, how has the commission been accepted by the system per se?
See, I think one, one appreciation and we must really appreciate the Indian government for this is that, the appreciation of the fact that you no longer can be sectoral in your approach. No, you don't have, you can't have solutions of one sector, the problems of the world are so complex or the nation are so complex. You need the best of minds from everywhere and we, the Capacity Building Commission, itself is an exemplar for that. I come from civil society and the academic space. The chairman comes from the private sector and consulting space, the other member comes in the public sector space. We have brought in skills from all the three major sectors. And because the government needs these skills, because partnering, cooperation, collaboration, working with other partners, all this is necessary today. And I think that understanding is growing in the government, it's, I, obviously nothing can be perfect, it's growing. And I would say that our, our acceptance is also, I can see a very, I am very positive and buoyed by the fact that people, though we have not been very loud and visible in our way, in, in the way we, we don't really want to be, but our work should speak for ourselves. We get, we get, keep getting called from ministers, some senior bureaucrats, some secretaries of the government and asking us to come and help them out. And so that means there is a hunger for capacity now. The training institutions are reaching out to us and saying, please help us out, make us better. So I believe that everybody wants to do good. Let's, let's start, I, I'm, I'm talking from the experience of six months itself. It's a pleasant experience, it's a good experience because one, I came in with a stereotype. I came with a stereotype that government is mediocre, their people are all lazy, they don't work. I think I'm happy to be proved wrong until now. I would, I only go by six months of experience and people are willing to accept change and people are willing to explore. And we have a very collaborative approach. We are not here to tell people what to do, we are just here to tell people options, that this is the one way you could do these things better. And we are right now addressing the low lying fruits of capacity by training. Then when we start addressing more complex issues like systems change or when you start looking at the workplace and rules, regulations, etc. That's going to be a new, new ballgame to play. But I think by that time, we sure would have established our credibility in terms of our building capacities to deliver. And everybody inherently wants to learn, wants to actually use some of the new skills. But there are certain system problems, like I might learn new things, but will the system allow me to use it? Will I, will it actually exploit it? We send offices out for training, they come back and they get posted to irrelevant places. So there are certain such structural changes that we need to do and I'm sure that it will get addressed over time. We are focusing on two, three things, very simplistically. First is, are people motivated to even do public service? That's the Karma Yogi thinking, right? The moving from Karma Chari to Karma.
How do you, how do you find that out? Is the person motivated enough?
We are going to do engagement survey, we are going to actually, for the first time in the history of the country, we're going to run an engagement survey of public servant employees. And then that's going to be the starting point. And then we're constantly talking, every day I meet officials, different layers, different levels, understanding from them. That's what we've been doing for six months, just soaking it all in and getting first hand inputs from actual people who matter. It's a number that's large, but I know that we can only do groups and extrapolate from that.
So this engagement, this engagement survey is a sample survey of.
We are, we are still not finalized the mechanics of it, whether it has been census or it's going to be a sample survey, we are just still talking. And we are designing the whole thing, that this is still work in progress. And I'm sure once we finalize it, it will be statistically valid enough for us to draw conclusions and inferences. But those are different ways of knowing it, that's one way I'm saying. One is direct feedback, one is focus group discussions that we're having. We're having multiple data sources that we're using to validate what we're thinking. So the system, what means is, motives is one thing, next is the means, do they have the means to deliver on this? Right, and that is where training comes in. So we're looking at what are the gaps you have in your competencies, whether it's behavioral competency, whether it's your domain competency or it's a functional competency, we're mapping it. Once the digital platform I God goes live, we'll have anywhere, anytime, any instrument, any place, kind of a knowledge out there which people can draw, draw into, draw from and learn. So they can, I get posted as health secretary, health, joint secretary in health today, am I even ready for that? So there's a set of courses we'll be offering and I God, they can do it and then go report. Tomorrow I get transferred to education, I can do the same thing, get the, get the competence that domain requires. So we're putting all this in place and then the three to six months, it should be there.
Is it important for you to kind of build a platform for training or? Because most of these courses are available in the open source area. I mean, like a Coursera or an edX has these courses, even an UpGrads for that matter.
But we need to contextualize it, right?
Yes, precisely, precisely. So contextualize it and possibly also identify what is it that is necessary for you to know? If you are moving from finance to Ministry of Health, you know. So what is it that the healthcare system, basic understanding you need to know? That I see, there is certainly a lack of specialized courses there. But I wanted to kind of address another issue here about the public policy. A few months back, almost a year back now, we did a survey of Class B, Class C officers in different state to basically find out what do they understand about public policies, intent, structure? It's, you know, even public policy, which is recently, policy that has recently come out. Say for instance, you know, revamping the, the new policy on the RERA, you know, the Act, RERA Act. How much do they know about it? But we found that at the Class B, Class C level, there is very little understanding of legislative policy or policy itself. They don't know why they're doing what they're doing. They are doing what they're doing as has been told by the department or by that system. And they're just, you know, following the orders above and below. I mean, it's, it's a filing system at the end of the day. And this lack of awareness is problematic in my opinion because it finally means that they don't know the end objective of that policy. So they don't know why is the government spending X amount of money on this, on this scheme or this subsidy? And why is it crucial? This is a fundamental challenge. Do you see this playing any role in, in the Capacity Commission's work going ahead?
I'm first going to answer, complete my answer to the last question, in completely. So the, I think the three parts of it I was explaining, I was focusing on to the Capacity Building Commission. First is the need, the motives of the person and how to build the motivation to work. Second is the means, give them the tools, the skillsets, the toolkit. And third is create the opportunity. So you, you actually, he might be very motivated, he may have the abilities, but if it's not posted to a place where he can use the abilities, it's going to be wasted. So those structural readjustments is what we'll also be looking at, policy recommendations is what we'll actually be doing. We'll be doing the HR audit to understand this, to map it out and start placing people, right people in the right place with the right skillsets. So coming back to your next question, you must also understand the Group A officers of the country are only thirty thousand. Whereas the Group B and Group C, the rest of the four million that I spoke about. And if you look at it, most of the training goes for the Group A officers. The Group A and Group C investments made on them are very, very, very minimal. But then the silver lining is the training policy. We have added a training policy in two thousand twelve and I must say, it is a fairly well done policy. We are going to revise it now, but the last one we have is two thousand twelve, though we might not have lived up to the policy. If somebody had gone back, read it and implemented it, they wouldn't have needed a Capacity Building Commission also. And the government is spending closer to one and a half percent of the establishment cost on training. It's going to put that kind of money, we have eight hundred institutions spending closer sixteen thousand crores a year on building capacities. But we have to start evaluating them, measuring impact and start focusing on Group B and C. So at the Capacity Building Commission, we have decided that while Group A officers are getting a lot of investment in training, they're also important, we are going to focus on Group B and C. And the government is going to put four hundred and thirty-one to piece per employee of the government into the special purpose vehicle I got for this platform that you spoke about. And I got is not, we are not rediscovering the B. It is a single learning management system, which will also incorporate various content providers. It could be edX, Coursera, they have to do it on our terms. Because everybody loves Indian data and take it out of the country, but they don't want to do things for India. So but here, that is where the commission comes in, we'll curate, we'll make sure that they're good enough for India. We, we want tolerate mediocre material or secondary material. You might be Harvard, you might be Princeton, but you will do things for India. And so we'll make sure all that happens and put it back on this platform and ensure that the best of content, if it's already out there, why would we reinvent the B? There's no point. But our own training institutes, capacities will be built and they will have a lot of contextually relevant material out there. Why should we learn about international cases when India can offer cases to the world? And Indians, the public servants need Indian examples. And this is the kind of things the commission will be doing and we'll actually be integrating it and focusing on like, like you rightfully said, on the more important layer of Group A and Group C. And we need to build capacities, you have. And we need to build capacities. You are right, there are examples where I might not, I might be working like just under cog in the wheel. Right in the system and I just deliver on it, but I will not have an appreciation of it. But that, when you move from rules, that is why you're always rule-focused. But when you start seeing the larger picture, when you start seeing the child uh that in the younger world is getting the food. And I'm sitting in this Ministry of Women and Child Development and my job is just to push a file to release funds. But if I can connect that child getting that meal there, then I know my role is to make sure nutrition is fought and not my file to be pushed.
And motivation, motivation will also be higher. I mean, like, if you see the end result, yeah.
And I'm, we think that's our role in the commission, to that make this connect, de-silovise people. See, as a nation moves, and we must also understand the ecosystem, to the country today is talking of whole of government approach. Today, the government is talking a whole of nation approach. I think that's a very different paradigm. And so once all these things sink in. Collectively, I think the impact, I am very confident in an year or two from today, you'll start seeing impact. You're in the policy space and I would even say that people like you should start measuring this change. And in a year or two from today, you can start seeing ease of living of citizens go up because of all these changes happening at the top.
You think so that, I mean, uh ease of living would improve in a year's time?
I, I, I believe so. I don't just think so, I believe so.
That's, that's, that's good, that's good. Because, I mean, from moving from ease of doing business to ease of living. Effectively improves not just uh businesses, but it improves the life of the citizen then. And Prime Minister kind of putting that as a target and objective is, I think, is really aspirational from a system perspective. So thank you very much, Dr. Balu, for sharing your views with us. We would like to be in touch with you. And we'd like to explore another six months down the line, what your experience has been. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.